Good evening. I call this meeting of the Dover Regional, Dover Sherburne Regional School Committee to order. Today is Tuesday, June 10th, and we are meeting in the Dover Sherburne School Library. The time is now 5:31. I am Beth McCoy. I'm the superintendent, and I will start this meeting until we have selected a chair. That said, I would like to welcome our three new members to the committee. Jeff Cassidy is joining us from Dover, formerly on the Dover School Committee. Mary Louder, joining us from Sherburne. And Lindsay Nye, joining us from Dover. Thank you. So, welcome.
Thank you.
And at this point, I would like to ask if there are any nominations for chair. So, it'll be a chair and a co-chair. One will be from Dover, one will be from Sherburne. And then there'll be a vote for secretary, which can be from either town. So, is there a nomination for chair?
I nominate Angie Johnson for chair.
Okay, Angie Johnson. Are there any other nominations for chair? Okay, that being the only one. Is there a second motion in support of Angie? Second from Mary Louder? Okay, any discussion? Would you accept the position if you're voted in?
I accept the position.
Okay, so all in favor?
Hi.
All right, so all in favor. Congratulations, Angie. And now you get to find a vice chair from Dover and a secretary.
From Dover. Okay, so may I ask, does anyone have a motion for a vice chair, which has to be from the Dover side, for the regional school committee?
So, your options are Jeff and Lindsay and Kevin.
Kevin. Can I, I nominate Jeff.
Any other nominations?
Any other nominations?
A second.
Very good. I say, smart move. So, all in favor?
Hi.
You accept?
I accept.
All right, great.
Thank you.
Perfect. Now secretary, so that's anybody, so it's all fair game.
Do you want to explain?
Yeah, why don't you explain? Because you've probably, you've done secretary before, haven't you? Or no? No. So, how do you explain secretary? The secretary's position, it's generally with, essentially not really even note-taking. It's more or less...
Yeah, if you go to any executive sessions...
Sessions, and you do take notes.
You do have to take your own notes.
Right. So, that's, so when we're in a general session, which is always public and televised, and then we have a note taker, a scribe, who does that. But when we go into executive session, that's a private, because sometimes there's other things that we need to discuss outside of public purview, if it's proprietary in nature. And for that reason, then we have the secretary take the notes for that, and then they will submit the notes. It's quick. It's not in-depth.
That can be from Dover or Sherburne?
It can be from either, either town. So, have we any nominations for the secretary from either Dover or Sherburne?
Do we know if anybody wants to do it?
Yeah, is anyone interested in this? It's not, it's not, it's not, Toa's shaking her head in a small fashion, so I'm thinking, no.
Kevin's not here. I mean, come on.
Yeah, Kevin is not here, and Kevin's very meticulous.
So, we could nominate him?
We could, and he's been on the committee for a while, so.
Can I nominate Sherburne?
Sure, you can, yeah.
I nominate Kevin Crotty for secretary.
Very good. Is there any discussion?
I think he'll be awesome.
See? There we go.
He's got experience.
He's got experience, and we would all help him with note-taking. So, with that being said, do I have a second? Toa, second? All in favor? All right. Kevin, congratulations from afar.
So, you guys are not coming?
Well, that's right. That's what sometimes happens, and it's not terrible. Okay, so that's the reorganization, so we're done with our Unit 50 reorganization, correct?
Right. That's just your regional school.
Regional school, yeah.
Yeah, well, through Unit 50. Do you have any others?
Yeah, I have the other. So, there we go. Okay, so now we move on to welcoming our new people, because you are here, and we've really kind of gotten started in a, in a quick fashion. So, Jeff, you're moving up from the Dover School Committee, where Jeff was chair of that, so he does have a good bit of experience with chairing. And Mary Louder, who is here from the Sherburne side, so we appreciate you joining us. And Lindsay, her name's your last name?
Nye.
Nye, I just wanted to make sure I didn't say it incorrectly. And Lindsay is coming to us from the Dover side. So, welcome to you all, and thank you. And if you have any questions, feel free to reach out to one of us. And as far as a lot of administrative questions to Dawn, and both Beth are great, and Dawn's been on the school committee in a prior life before she became an administrator. So, if you need some historical knowledge, she's great on historical knowledge, yep.
Even during meetings?
Even during, yeah, because sometimes, you know, there's, there's things from years and years ago that we don't know, and we're like, well, we'll have to look into that. And she can be, actually, this is how it was done, and I was like, well, that...
I'm a dinosaur now.
Yeah, no, but it does, it's very helpful. So, if you have any questions, and she's our finance person, and can very much explain the budget and how it works and what some of the terms mean. So, there you go. All right, with that being said, now that our meeting is in full force, we're going to go to the community comments section. There is a virtual link for those who wish to make a comment, for whom it is not possible or preferred to attend in person. So, with that being said, I'm going to read the guidelines for community comments, and then I'll ask if anyone has any. Please remember that community comments are an opportunity for members of the school committee to listen to members of the community. As the chair of the meeting, it is my responsibility to facilitate this communication between the public and the committees present this evening. I personally believe this communication is a critical element to assist the members of this committee with discharging the responsibility of the positions they've been elected to hold. To effectively facilitate this discussion, I encourage anyone providing comments to consider that the volunteers that comprise this committee are your neighbors, friends, and fellow community members. We welcome all points of view, but I respectfully ask that you treat these committee members in a manner consistent with that in mind. Collectively, we are here to support the administration, who in turn assists our educators and supports staff to educate, care for, invest in, and inspire our children. Community comments are not a forum for answering questions or engaging in a debate. We respectfully request that you please make your comments brief, no more than three minutes, and that you move the discussion forward by adding new information. Please try to avoid repeating points that have already been made, and once the public comment section of the meeting has concluded, we will move on to other business, and unsolicited comments from the community will no longer be permitted. This is standard operating procedure in school committee meetings across our three school districts. If you desire more information or have specific questions, contact information for committee members is on the district website. With that being said, do we have, should we, I'll go to the audience first, and then we'll go online, if that's okay? Do we have anybody online?
Nope.
Okay, so are there any community comments? Okay, so let's, we'll kind of go, and state your name, and like, whether you're Sherburne or Dover.
Yeah, of course. First of all, thank you very much for this opportunity. My name is Bill Motley, and I live in Dover. So, I prepared some written texts that I'd like to read, too, if I may. Thank you. I am a lifelong member of the community. I actually grew up in Dover, attended the Dover Public Schools, as did my mother. So, my family's been in this town for many, many years. Like many who have been, grown up in Dover, I've always envisioned the idea of raising my family here in this town as well. And I've been drawn to the many great things about this town, the beauty of its land, the great school systems that we have here, and the small, tight-knit community has been especially appealing for my wife and I, as we made that decision several years ago to move out of the city and to move out to Dover. Over the years, we've sent our children to chickering into the middle school and now the high school, and we've been very involved as parents. My wife in particular has volunteered for countless hours, always stepping up when there was a need, always advocating, not just for our own children, but for those who needed a voice in this, in this process. We've had great memories of the Dover school system. It's been a good experience for our daughter, Emma, and we feel very grateful that we're a part of this community. I would say that, that being said, I wouldn't be being totally honest with you today if I said there wasn't another side that has been deeply disheartening to my wife and I. Like many families that probably you've heard about, we've had some real serious problems with bullying, one such that with our other son, our son, we had to pull him out of the school and send him to a private school. But we have continually seen a pattern, not only just with one of our particular, our daughters, but with other members of the community whose children are attending here as well, be it cyberbullying or just repeated cases of bullying that have been taking place within the school system. But what has been a pattern that has been in our, in our experience, has been particularly troubling to us, is that the way that the school administration has been handling these particular incidents for us, or candidly has failed to handle our particular incidents. We've seen these procedures ignored. We've seen policies that seem to be inconsistently applied to our child versus others, and far too often, we've seen serious issues that have been quietly, just sort of what appears to be, have been swept under the rug. As a parent, this has left us feeling very angry, as...
My three minutes.
My three minutes, I'll be very quick. Our child has done nothing wrong here, and yet she is the one who has felt like the perpetrator in this situation. And as a lifelong member of this community, it's in my heart to see that this does not stand, and that we try to correct this problem on a go-forward basis. We realize that no school is perfect, but transparency and accountability and willingness to evolve, these are things that are not optional when it comes to the safety and the well-being of our children. We're not here to be overly critical this evening, because we're here because we care, okay? But we are also here because this is a district where families feel the need to be heard, and where children truly can be protected and receive a great education. Thank you.
Thank you.
Greetings, friends, neighbors, and school committee members. I'd like to give my own warm welcome to the new committee members tonight, as well as my thanks to the current and longstanding members who, and, sorry, longstanding members. These parent volunteers give hundreds and even thousands of hours, Angie, to, out of their busy lives for this community, from defining the values and priorities of the district, to the minutia of financial reports, and from the realities of our bus stops, to the educational rights of each one of our students. School committee members use their personal strengths to contribute to the work of the committee. Transparency is essential in this role, as you represent the wider interests and needs of a group, and not necessarily yourself or your family. I have learned after 80-plus school committee meetings, that to truly represent others, you must have courage. As humans, we are tuned into, tuned into acceptance by the group as a means to our survival. So, it can be quite alarming to speak up about an issue that is unpopular or unwelcome. This happens most frequently when we highlight the needs of a marginalized group, which is, in my view, the mandate of every elected person, for any elected person. This is not easy, and there will be times when you will feel compelled to vote against your own interests, out of obligation to the wider community. However, this is also an incredibly inspiring position to be in. You have the opportunity to directly help the children in our community in ways that can follow them for their lifetimes. You are able to help caregivers feel heard about issues that weigh heavily on them, and which are impacting their child's school experience. You can encourage meaningful discussions among leaders around issues that are barriers to education. In essence, you can bring to light the lived experiences of families who are affected by our policies. When students feel seen and valued in a holistic way by a team of adults who care about them, including their school committee members, they learn that they can trust their educational community to keep them safe. This sense of safety is essential to our students' ability to access higher-level learning processes. Without a sense of trust and safety, the academic progress, school experience, and mental health of students who have been targeted are damaged in alarming ways. These students often retreat into themselves, losing trust in adults and peers, and these feelings of isolation can lead to depression. You don't have to be a mental health clinician, as I am, to know that depression can be a life-threatening condition for our adolescents and teens. One thing has been made clear to me: we must do better. Following the receipt of my email from May 6th, over 35 parents and community members reached out to me to thank me and to share their concerns. What has been made clear to me is that many members of our community want improvements in transparency, an audit of our harassment, bullying, and abuse protocols, to ensure that the civil rights of victims are preserved, and more value placed upon children's well-being within the school environment. I will share these letters, texts, and comments with the committee and administration, as these were communicated to me before the end of my term. I'm happy to share them with you, if not all at this moment, obviously. Our students are under an immense amount of pressure to succeed in every area of their lives. This pressure begins externally and is then internalized by our children. We must listen with compassion when they speak up about their primary needs and stressors, which can impact not only their willingness to go to school, but also their willingness to live. I encourage parents to ask, "Are you okay?", before they ask about, before you ask about homework. Ask your child how you, they felt during a test, before asking them about their score. Feelings are information, chemical signals that are intentionally, that are being intentionally created by our brains to give us information related to our well-being. Ask your child how they are feeling, and take the time to listen to their answer, like it's the most important answer in the world, because sometimes it is. I would like to add on several minutes, I have three impact statements that I'd like to read from, they're anonymous, so that I'm happy to read them to you now.
I was going to say, do you think that might be better shared? Because if it's a minor person, I don't know if I want that out.
Oh, they, they asked me to share these. These are from parents in the community who want me to share this with the community, the committee.
Okay. Three minutes each. Yeah, I just wanted to make sure there was no.
Okay. To the school committee, this is from a parent of an alum. I'm writing to share my daughter's story, because while her experience may be labeled as bullying, what she went through was far more serious, and the consequences were nearly fatal. She was being spoken about in a graphic sexual way by a group of male students. The conversation escalated. The word rape was used. The entire conversation was shared with her by another student. She was mortified. She didn't want to go to school, to walk through the hallways, because she didn't want people to think about her in that way. She didn't feel safe. She was embarrassed. Her grades started slipping, and she began to withdraw into herself. The consequences for those who harassed her were minimal, and the situation spiraled. Her trauma lasted years. The weight of it all became too much, and ultimately, it led to a suicide attempt. I want you to sit with our reality, not just that she was bullied, but that the outcome could have been her life. The systems in place did not protect her. The response from the school felt inadequate, and the message it sent, whether intended or not, was that her safety, dignity, and mental health were not priorities. This is her story in the simplest versions, but this is not just about my daughter. It's about what we are signaling to every female student who suffers in silence, and to every male student who inflicts harm without real accountability. Please do better, for her and for every child like her. This is from a parent of an eighth-grade female student from this year. My daughter was sent pornography this past April by a male student via Snapchat. In a screenshot of the chat shared with us by other parents, we could see that she had been added. We filed both a bullying complaint and a Title IX complaint. During a phone call with administrators, we were told that the incident had already been reported and investigated. However, when we inquired as to why our daughter had not been called in for this investigation, they could not give us an answer. They kept saying that she had not screenshotted the pornographic images, so they had no evidence. There were multiple other students who were also forced to view pornography on the Snapchat, but yet their parents were not alerted by the administration. When our daughter was placed with the same student in her group for DC, we objected. Her Title IX complaint was still pending, and she felt unsafe around the student. Two hours later, we were told by Kate McCarthy that our complaint was being rejected. The reason given was that this did not happen at school, so therefore, it did not meet the criteria for a complaint. My daughter was traumatized by this incident, and it has affected her in school and at home. She has had intrusive thoughts of the images, loss of concentration in sports and schoolwork, actively avoids discussing the incident, and feels unsafe around the student. It defies logic that it would not affect her. The fact that she was forced to ride a bus and spend the majority of the DC trip with this student was a slap in the face to her. It is abhorrent. The school cannot continue to ignore the situation. The district appears to have doubled down on their stance of minimizing victims' experiences, and I want to say to the district that what you're doing is wrong. This sends the message to our students, particularly female, that when you report abusive behavior, you will be stonewalled and silenced. And I have one more, if you'll permit me. This is from another parent of an eighth-grade, female eighth-grade student. On September 18th, 2024, my wife and I were informed by two school administrators that our 13-year-old daughter was named a victim in police investigation, which involved DS middle school boys, her classmates, obtaining, circulating, and potentially altering her photos through an AI app, and then distributed broadly on social media. As you can imagine, this is not how we envisioned starting off the, the school year. Navigating it in the weeks and months that it followed has been traumatic and stressful situation, not only for our daughter, but our entire family. I am sure most in this room are aware of the situation I'm referring to, though there are a lot of rumors and misconceptions circulating amongst the school and community. I'd like to take this moment to share some of the key facts captured in the police reports from Dover Police Department and Sherburne Police Department. Students first brought forward the photos to school administrators on Monday, September 14th. Parents of the victims were not notified until Wednesday, September 16th. Over the course of those 48 hours, the school met with the boys and their parents, and in weeks following, the boys admitted to deleting the bad photos on the bus ride home that very first day, September 14th. School administrators called police because they saw concerning images, and due to multiple students reporting the existence of AI-generated news and sexually explicit images. There are 16 confirmed female victims, though at one point, police mentioned there could be photos of every eighth-grade female. Photos of the victims were taken off social media accounts, their own Instagram, et cetera, but some were confirmed to have been taken of the girls in their bathing suits, unknowingly, at Farm Pond, Kingsbury Club, and at private events. Based on a search warrant obtained by the Dover Police Department, it was confirmed that four Dover Sherburne Middle School students had access to the folder on Discord, in which two files were found. One file had over 360 photos of Dover Sherburne Middle School girls. The second folder contained what police described as internet girls. Nude images were confirmed to be found in this folder, along with headless bodies. To brush this under the rug or turn a blind eye is not the solution. What messages, what message are we sending to these boys if there is no discipline for their actions? The message we are, we are sending to victims and other females is that it's okay, and boys can get away with it. What if it was your daughter?
Thank you.
Thank you for your time.
Any more community comments? Before we move on, I just want to thank everyone who came, and if you'd like to stay for the remainder of our meeting, you may. That being said, I'm going to have to come at this, too, from, from two different angles. I'm a school committee member, but I'm also a former prosecutor, and my, my area of expertise was crimes against women and children. The issue we have, as well as we're dealing with minority, with minor children, so that's why I said that about making sure some of the police report things, I'm not so sure we could have, should have had that vocalized. That being said, because, you know, you have to make sure that the police were okay with giving that out, too, and I'm not sure they would have distributed that widely with it being minors. But with that being...
This is public information. He already announced the statement.
Yeah, he announced in a statement, but it wasn't as specific, I'm saying, as what I'm saying. So, with that being said, I hear what you're saying, and you do have a right to speak as, as you wish, just with it publicly broadcast. I just wanted to make sure that people are aware that if, if you were one of the persons who may have been in those photos that maybe did not want that disseminated, that was not my concern. So.
I believe it's already been in the news. I'm an attorney as well, and I didn't see any issue with what was disclosed. And I, I think it's important we know, because the concern is that...
Do you want to state your name and what town?
I'm Rachel Roy.
And you're from?
I'm from Dover. The concern is that when these issues are raised, we sort of hide behind the guise of, oh, it's private, we can't talk about it, and it gets swept under the rug. And that is the perception, unfortunately, so many parents have felt within the community over the course of years, and it goes across all the schools, except I don't have anything from high school, the middle school, and both elementary schools. And so, if we keep responding to these, of, well, it's private, we can't talk about it, how are we ever going to fix it? That's my question. How do we fix it if we keep sleeping down?
Thank you, Rachel. Okay. So, at this point, I'm going to close community comments, and we will move on to the next portion, which is the superintendent's.
Great, thank you. Good evening, everyone. I did have an update on the ongoing investigation that I was going to leave till the end of my update and report, but I will provide that update now, which is that our independent investigator has completed his report. It has been shared with all of the families involved and provided to the Title IX coordinator and the decision-maker in the district. The decision-maker in the district is currently reviewing the report. It's actually seven different reports, based on seven different students involved, and some of them are 30 pages in length. So, we're reviewing that, and at the end of the review, the independent investigator will determine if there is a violation of Title IX, and if so, what consequences are appropriate. That information will be shared with all of the families involved, and they either accept the decision, or there is an opportunity to appeal. That said, I would like to address, I think, you know, the, the question about looking at our harassment, bullying, and civil rights policies and protocols. Is it a good one? As you know, Angie, better than anybody, because you've been reviewing all of the policies for the last year and a half with your policy subcommittee, we have been updating all of our policies to make sure they are in line with state and federal guidelines. Our handbook, all four handbooks across the four schools are going to be overhauled this summer, to make sure that they are all aligned, again, with state and federal policy. We already had one legal workshop with our attorney, Justin Holmes. We'll be having another one with a civil rights attorney in August. And at the end of this particular investigation that was mentioned during public comments, we will be working with our attorney to reflect on the process and see if there are any lessons to be learned moving forward. For bullying specifically, this year, prior to the event that happened in September, we had already lined up our attorneys to do, every year, we do a legal workshop with our attorneys to learn what cases have come out and what's new within the world of education and educational law. This one was specifically that we did this year on bullying. We've updated our protocols, we've updated our reporting mechanisms for both our own data, as well as the state. And I feel like we've made a lot of progress, and we'll continue to do so, knowing that we owe it to our students and our families. So, happy to address any questions or concerns before I move on to other updates and topics from the committee.
I do have a question.
The community comments are closed, and now it's time for this. I'm sorry. That's just the protocol for the way the meetings are structured. It's nothing personal. This is from the committee. Does anyone on the committee have a question, or? No?
The other point I'd like to make is that the schools have not seen either the police reports from Dover or Sherburne, because...
You can get them.
If you would share them with us, that's...
No, you can, you can actually go to the police department.
We've asked.
We've asked, yeah, we're not in...
You can play it.
Thank you. Good to know. Otherwise, I would like to just recognize that it is the end of the year. I'd like to thank and recognize our students who have worked really hard all year long and are currently sitting through final exams, specifically at high school. We've had so many recognitions of their academic performance, their arts, their science winnings this year, and they definitely deserve a break moving forward. I'd like to recognize our educators and administrators for all the hard work they've put in, the blood, sweat, and tears that go into everything they do, both in the classroom and during field trips, particularly the DC trip, which is a three-day trip away from the building, and I know how much planning goes into that all year, as well as families give, our educators giving time away from their own families to be with our students. Heard nothing but positive feedback from that trip this year. And I'd also like to thank our parents and our volunteers and our committee members, you know, as I sit in school committee members each week, as I go to town meeting, as I go to various events. Our schools and our two towns would not run without volunteers and, and people who give their time in support of kids, so I just want to say thank you for that. Last Thursday, we graduated 153 proud seniors who are all launching to wonderful post-secondary plans, whether it's college, or gap years, or the military, jobs. I believe that the matriculation list is in your packets, and you're welcome to take a look at that, but the ceremony was fantastic. Thank you to Mr. Smith for organizing that with his team. Thank you to Angie for being there as a representative from the regional committee, along with Mark Healy, and we had a member from both of the select boards there as well. I think the highlight of always are our musical ensembles, the chorus and the band, as well as the student speeches. One was, but being the eye of a hurricane, and that analogy to moving forward, and another about having butterflies in your stomach, and that kind of, that conflict between, you know, the beetle, the beauty of the butterfly, but then the feeling of being anxious moving forward. And just as he left the stage, there was a monarch butterfly that flew across it, which was pretty powerful. And I think one of my favorite pieces, I'll always remember this, is Robin Hunter, a member of the Dover Selectmen. Her theme was all about moving forward into college. One piece of advice is a text, a text a day keeps the parents away. So as you transition, remember, keep your parents updated so they don't show up on campus or have a safety phone, safety call because they haven't heard from you in a week. I also want to recognize those people who are leaving our district or retiring. As you know, Tracy Sokolowski has decided to focus her energy more on curriculum instruction and kind of the building bones of teaching and learning. So she has accepted a position as a director of of teaching and learning. Paul Butterworth, our beloved librarian from the high school, is retiring. Andrea Moran and Anita Sebastian, both special educators at the middle school, are retiring. And Carrie Dardempre, middle school French teacher, is retiring. Yes, and Bittersweet, they get to wake up when they want to wake up and do what they want to do now, but we do appreciate all their time and energy that they've devoted to Dover Sherburne over the years. And we get to welcome new folks. I have the pleasure of meeting all hires before they sign their contract, and I am thrilled with the folks that our educators and our administrators have spent hours screening and interviewing. And I think there's there's lots of fresh ideas and fresh perspectives that will be joining our team moving forward. I'll have more updates at the joint meeting, but happy to take any feedback, questions, or comments.
I was just wondering, will I be, will the new members be sent emails regarding past events, upcoming, like, just to be caught up in everything? Because there are some things I have no idea with, yeah.
Good question.
Yeah, so are you just speaking in general or with the committees? Yes, you'll be getting and you'll see there's a listing of things that we have to kind of get organized over the summer before our next meeting, one of which is committees, because we have various committees within this committee, facilities committee, negotiations committee, because we have teacher contract negotiations coming up. So I'll be sending out an email, I'm hoping to do it tomorrow, about what that listing is, the people who are currently on our committee, which there's not that many, there's Toa, myself, and Kevin, is it right? So we are on committees already, and if you wish to stay, I'm gonna give you all kind of first choice, do you want to stay in the committee or would you like to hop off? But it's kind of nice if you're on one, because you were on Dover, but it kind of translates, you can kind of move yourself onto that because they're similar. So I'll send you those listings. I'll also send you listings. There are certain terms, and I would encourage you to set up a meeting with Dawn. When I first got on the committee, the funniest story is when I was on the Sherburne Committee, Dawn kept talking about circuit breaker, and it was with regards to the budget. And I kept thinking, do we have an electrical problem in the schools? What is going on? Why are we circuit breaking everything? Like, are we flipping breakers? Do we need an electrician? It had nothing to do with that, it was all about finance. So there are things that you, if you would meet with her, and then you could also meet with with Beth as well. That way, they can kind of fill you in on terminology is really the main goal because there are things, and there are certain things, you know, like they said, as a as a district, we have to comply with the Massachusetts law, and we have to reply, comply with the federal law, and generally, they fall in line, you know. But sometimes I feel like Massachusetts, we go over and above, especially with educational sources that that we try to provide support systems for for children, so we don't send them out of district and these things like that. We do a lot of things here. So there are things that you may not understand at first, you can always contact me. But the things coming up, we will have, like I said, the meeting in August with the civil rights attorney, and the one, Justin, we didn't, we didn't really, did we tape that? We didn't tape that.
They did not tape it.
So-
I have slides, though.
We have slides. So some of those things that we've done in the past that I think may be helpful to you, I can send you, there are some buckets of slides that may bring you up to speed quicker.
Yeah, just to get caught up on everything.
Yeah.
The other point, too, I think, now that we have Parent Square and we've become user-friendly with Parent Square, is obviously when we send a message, it goes to all of the teachers and the students and the families associated with that school, and there's a guest option. So we've included, you know, the the police chiefs, the fire chiefs, the local preschools. We should include all school committee members, so you make sure you get, if you're not associated with both the middle and the high school, that you get their newsletters too, because there's a wealth of information that come from our principals and our staff.
Well, thank you, I appreciate it.
And it does, you know, there are there are things, like I said, that that will come up, and you'll be like, I don't really understand what you're talking about. That happens a lot. I mean, because there's a lot of information, there's a lot of things going on, a lot of moving parts. And there's also, when you take, you'll have to take the course about, you know, and that's all about, you know, you can't, you can't meet in groups, you know, it's all public, and that's very much adhered to, so you have to be, you know, very cognitive about. And if you're just like hanging out in a group, I mean, it was, it was to the point one time where I was standing there, I was like, oh, my gosh, there's four of us, somebody go away. And we weren't even there for school stuff, but I'm like, just move away from me, just move. And so it's it's funny, but it's not funny. So just make sure if you're, you know, don't discuss, which I'm sure you don't want to discuss school committee. I mean, you know, it's, we discuss it here enough, so talk about the weather, which is raining all the time, so anyway. But I'll send you that, and I'll send you the listing. There's gonna be a lot of spots to fill, unfortunately, with our committees. And if you have questions about that, there should be short descriptions, but if there's something like you have a question, how much time commitment? Because we have it listed, like, who leads it, like, if you have a teacher liaison. But some of them do require a bit more time, and so that might be something to consider. So, okay.
And even just one more comment, like, during our meetings, anybody can ask questions. So Lindsay, if you have a question, if you have a question, like, just ask and we'll be able to answer. You, right now, you're, you two have the only context from regional meetings from the past, but collectively, we have some answers probably.
And Toa has a really good memory.
I had a, I had a comment about that. So the workshop that we are required to take is really, really helpful.
It is.
But I took it really early on. At that point, I didn't have much understanding. And I would really like to take it as the year is coming to an end. I think, I don't know, are we allowed to take it again?
I think you can, yes.
Yeah, so because it just, it's a different viewpoint, you're taking it again.
It is, because you understand.
I think I understand so much better now.
Right.
Yeah, but it is, the workshop, the whole day workshop is an eye-opener, and it is great.
I think Kevin took it in March, and so you have enough context-
Yeah.
That it makes sense. If you take it too early, like you said, that it all goes over your head.
I was planning on waiting a bit.
Yeah, you just have to take it with the first year.
Yeah. Like I said, you know, mostly the things they want to be caught, you know, there are just certain bullet points to be really cognizant until you take it, and other than that. But it is good to, it is, I agree, it's good to take it later on too, because you do, you realize when looking back, you're like, oh, that's what they meant.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah. So I'll send that out about the committees. And the strange thing is, I never know how many committees we're supposed to sign up for, we're just supposed to kind of fill them. So my 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 ask is just, what are you, what are you interested in? And just kind of fill in whatever. We won't overload you, we will balance it out. And if there's one that's a huge time commitment, well, if you find up, sign up for like two or three, we're gonna be like, hmm, maybe just stick with, you know, so don't worry, we'll figure that out.
And some of them are committees of school committee members who will work on the negotiation team or on the personnel subcommittee. And then there's others that are liaisons to Positive, to PTO, to Challenge Success, to Metco. And you're really just maintaining a line of communication. So if you have any questions about any of the subcommittees or liaison positions, Angie, Jeff, Toa, myself, I'm happy to answer kind of what the time commitment looks like and and kind of what your role would be.
Perfect, thank you.
Anything else? That was a good question. Okay, financial report?
Yeah, and I'll be brief, and like I said, feel free to kind of have a basic one-on-one finance meeting with me. I think the region is a little bit of a different animal because it is the two towns coming together, and we are, we actually operate as a small town. So very much so, we're like a municipality versus the Dover School Committee or the Sherburne School Committee, so I can help bring you up to speed on that. But every month in your packet, every every month, every meeting that we have, you will have a warrant report, which is all the invoices, a summary of all the invoices that we paid, and one of you actually will be the signer. And sooner rather than later, if we can get that person, because we have a bit of a backlog for signing of warrants, and you're always welcome to come to central office and review those at any time, but this report just basically shows you the date and the amount of warrants that were processed. And because only one signer does it now because of a a change in municipality legislation, the other piece of that is just so every committee member can see what we're doing. So that will be a monthly report you have. You also have a monthly report, which is a running financial report of our operations. And so you'll see a revenue statement and a status of appropriations, which is really your expenditures. The narrative I will build upon, if it's not in bold, it's something that it's been, we already probably talked about it back in October when the first report came out, and I usually just bold the new information. But what it allows you to do is if you miss a meeting or if you're not catching up to speed, it's actually a good sort of reader's digest of what our financial results have been. So I just really wanted to highlight a couple of things now that we're at the end of the year. You will see a projected, an E and D, that'll be a term we'll have to get up to speed on, our projected, projection of the roll forward of E and D. So it takes our revenue surpluses, our expenditure surpluses, which luckily we do have some expenditure surpluses, and rolls it. But I wanted to highlight too just the uses of it. So in bold on revenues, we are running a surplus in revenues, but remember, we allocated one hundred and seventy-five thousand of E and D to be applied towards your fiscal year twenty-six budget, consistent with past practices. On the operating side, because of various staffing changes, we are projecting a positive variance of about four hundred thousand. Keep in mind, we allocated three hundred and fifty thousand of that, again, is another use of E and D for the turf field that's gonna be happening this summer. So it's just good to see how we're taking our surpluses and putting them back into either the fiscal year twenty-six budget or investments here on campus. And then you will get a final report of fiscal year twenty-five in your September packet, which I do try to do more bullet points of things that had happened, so it's it's easier to look at. So if you look at your roll forward, roll forward of E and D, you'll see the surplus, the revenue surplus is rolling in, the operating surplus. We'll talk about this a little bit later, but we are bringing forward a request to transfer seventy-five thousand dollars from our operating surplus into our unemployment fund. Last time we did that was in two thousand and fifteen, and we can talk about that more at the end, but they can also see the uses. And with the projection right now, we are going to be a projected E and D of just a little over three percent, which gets us back into that three to four percent range, which is our policy for E and D. We were below that last year with the amount that we put towards the rooftop units. And so I think that is where we want to be. And I do think that we have used some of our surpluses in really good ways. So I know that's a lot for the new members, but for those that have been here every month, that's where we stand. And again, we will provide a more sort of summary report of fiscal year twenty-five at your September meeting.
Do we, we don't have to vote on that transfer, do we?
You do, it's later on in the agenda.
All right. Is that it? Okay, so just to make, so a lot of our, when I first started, which I feel like a dinosaur now, we used to, they used to bring around notebooks with all our stuff in it, but now it's all online, so everybody got their login, so I just want to make sure. And sometimes I print it out and sometimes I don't. I'm at the adult portion now, and I just go through it on my screens.
I've come to realize I probably need my own laptop, so I will take care of that.
Well, no, we can always, if if that's not, we can always have it printed for you, and we can get it to you. That's, but I was just making sure, some people like to have it on paper and some people like it online, so I, it's personal preference, and you can just email me. I'm Johnson A. at Dover Sherburne.
We've also sat here with our phones too.
Yeah.
We don't always have, we don't always have it.
Because my eyes are so bad, I can't read that small.
Phones, iPads, whatever it works.
To be honest.
But it's no problem if you have like a hard copy?
Yeah.
I'm, I'm good, I appreciate it.
I just wanted to let everybody know, just to make sure, because-
We used to drive to people's houses.
They did, they would pull up, and I, at first, I thought, oh, no, what's happening? Like, did I not pay a bill? What's going on? Because they'd come very officially with a notebook to my door.
We still do that for budgets.
You got a folder, it was a lot.
We still get budget binders.
You still get budget binders, so we'll deliver those, sorry.
And you can talk about circuit breakers on that. Okay, that scarred me. So the next thing is the twenty-five, twenty-six middle school improvement plan. It's a first read.
So if I, I'll just give a little context. For those of you who haven't had a chance to meet or haven't seen in a while, we are joined by Principal John Smith from the high school and Principal Ann Deverkegan from the middle school. So in April, I am evaluated as superintendent and update the committees on the the work of our goals for the year, and then at that point, start to think about where do we go from here, rolling into the summer into the following year. So again, happy to share with you last year's goals and my evidence, if you'd like to review it. Thinking ahead in terms of next year's district goals, we've been talking about, a lot about the instructional practices. We're hoping to see K to twelve in all of our classrooms. Our teachers have really been doing a lot of risk-taking and trying to, you know, use strategies that make the learning relevant, to give students voice, to make sure that their lessons are more individualized, so it's not a one-size-fits-all lesson. And at this point, next year, kind of the next phase of that work is for educators to start sharing their practices with the people next door. We've provided a lot of, a lot of support for our educators from external sources, but there are so many good practices happening within our own walls that we want to make sure that they have opportunities to share those faculty meetings, to visit each other's classrooms, our full day of PD. So continuing with those same expectations of teaching and learning, but making sure our our teachers are learning from each other. The second goal is around data. We've done a ton of work of developing data teams and identifying specialists and interventionists that are looking at social, emotional, academic data. We now have Open Architects, which is a dashboard that makes it easy for us to dissect data and look at it in a million different ways. Next year, we'll continue that work and really start to focus on subgroups of students that need additional support. So that's the next phase there. And then we will continue to critique our communication practices around parent square. So that's not going away, but the official goal is really going to be around school safety, which, yes, involves communication, but also involves continuing to make sure that we're ready for if ever there's an emergency, as well as, as I mentioned in my former comments, really looking at our practices around bullying and following all of the practices and policies that are in place. So that'll be the next phase. So all that said, that's the district view, and then our our principals work with their school advisory councils to say, what does that look like for the middle school and high school? So without further ado, Mr. Deverkegan, take it away for the middle school.
Do you want me to sit? You want me to stay here?
Sure, or stand, whatever you're comfortable doing.
Awesome. I know you have the document, and welcome to everyone. Thank you for your time and, you know, energy that goes into this. It takes all of us to to run this, so I wish you luck on your, with this. So just kind of following Beth, you know, just using those as sort of North Stars, if you may, the educated collaboration, using data, safe and supportive schools. I think that that's what we we frame sort of under that, and a lot of the things are already, you know, in the works, but so sort of fit nicely to that. And I know you have the document. I love that it's a draft, and I will say that last year, brought a draft, and then, you know, just had some things happen after we presented it to the school committee, and we ended up adding to the final version that you'll see in the fall, our Yonder program with our cell phones. And that sort of really evolved over June, July, and August. So I love that we do the draft, and, you know, we can think deeper in the summer. You know, we've got so many things going on. So I actually shared this with my school council this week and got some good input from them as well. So I already have a couple of things that I'll probably tweak. But I'll just sort of go over the bullets, and they're inter, they're in each of the goals. But the first one, we have a new program that we put into place this year called WIN. It's what I need. And students either have academic support, they have a WIN block, or they're getting intervention during this period. And it's rolled out really successfully. We are making some tweaks based on sort of student and staff feedback, and we're actually putting a family survey out this week that will get some more, that will help inform that, what that looks like for twenty-five, twenty-six. But we continue to hope to grow it. And one of the things we were able to offer, we did a lot of interventions with math, ELA, some executive functioning, and the end of the year, we were able to offer enrichment or extension. And that was really, that was great. Teachers, students, families love that, so we're gonna try to incorporate some more of that. We're looking at a science enrichment for next year, a science, science extension, so we're really excited about that. One of the things that came up this year in intervention was sort of this need for more learning and understanding and support around executive functioning with middle school students. And really, we had a great professional conversation going, but there's, there's a lot to executive functioning. So one of my goals is to really put a school community conversation around that, with also with families, not just staff. So we've got staff doing some summer workshops around this. So we've got staff doing some summer workshops around this. We will continue to offer some WINS, you know, interventions for students around executive functioning. So that was something that sort of just organically came up this year that we're going to really harness. We will continue on with best practices and portrait of a graduate. I think, you know, I'm doing a lot of my end of the year meetings with staff and just hearing so much of what they're doing with the best practices. And also sort of to swing back to the district goals, really trying to put some more collaboration with that, where staff are not just doing this on their own, but they're sharing with their team or their, their teaching partner, their grade level partner. So really adding the collaboration piece to it. Space and work, so creating some more space for interventions. You know, space is premium, as you'll come to find out. It's, you know, where we do a lot with a little, but just looking for some more intervention space and also space for collaboration. Last year, this was part of our school improvement goal. And if you walk up, especially up on our second floor, there's lots, you wouldn't go through a day without seeing students working together in small groups, working at high tops and in some of the collaborative furniture that we've purchased. Some of our teachers, pre-COVID, we were really looking at innovative classrooms and that sort of all kind of got put on pause when we had to come back with six feet and desks and rows. So teachers have been doing a great job sort of bringing that back. We've used positive for some grants and we'll continue to grow that. And I'd also say the space piece, our outside, we have at the middle school, we have lunch and then we have a break recess, like it always feels funny to call it recess at middle school, but it's recess break. They've got about 10 to 12 minutes where they're outside and they're typically on the turf with balls and, and we're going to try to add to that equipment, but also painting some four-square. They love playing four-square. And so we're going to have some four-square courts painted and hopefully increase sort of the options out there. But it's a really, you know, it seems silly, it's recess or break, but it's a really important social time for our kids. They do a lot of social interaction. So to sort of make that even better, we've added like a game cart to the indoor pieces. So just really paying attention to that part of the day, because it's a great part of the day physically, they get out, but there's some great social interaction. So we're going to grow that. You'll hear a lot about challenge success and we did this, I wish Denny and Beth really supported this, I wish where students took some time to fill out, I wish that my teachers knew, I wish that my parents knew. And we're going to really work on the, the teacher piece and work with staff around that pretty intentionally at the beginning of the school year, so that will hopefully inform some adjustments and thinking and conversations. So that's our, you know, that's like a summary of everything that's in that document without going line by line. But again, it, it does tweak and change and I, I wonder with the family feedback survey that will maybe inform some of this as well. So you'll see the final version in the fall, but I'm happy to take some questions or if I sort of assumed you knew things that, that you didn't.
Actually, I have a question. Is the WIN program similar to the one at the elementary school?
It's a little different, it's
More age-appropriate?
Yeah, it's, so I can sort of, we have this, this three places that students are in during their WIN block. They're either, if they're receiving special ed services, they're in academic support. They may, or if they're not there, they're in a home base WIN, we call it. So this is where students are with probably 10 to 12 of the students with a teacher present. And it's a structured block of 15 minutes of independent reading, 15 minutes of doing IXL, and then 15 minutes to do homework. So it's sort of this very structured time. In the third place is they may be in a math or ELA or executive functioning WIN block where they're receiving intervention on that. We run in six-week cycles, so a lot of it comes from IXL data or teacher input, so that the intervention work is really targeting the skills that have been identified as needing, like to have some intervention and work on. So they run typically four to six weeks, probably more like six weeks next year.
Is there any, do some of the students receive those services while in the classroom with other students that are not? I'm trying to, sorry, I'm
Yeah, no, no, that's okay. There's usually, it can be anywhere from four to six students with a teacher. And within that four to six, they may be working on the same skill or a couple of different skills where the teacher is working and they're, you know, providing some, you know, teacher direction intervention, maybe some support with some IXL or, you know, but it's, it's very targeted. I don't know if that helps.
But they're not with other students that are not doing WIN at that time, I guess is what.
Yeah, so it's like a sixth grade WIN block, a seventh grade WIN block, and an eighth grade WIN block. So the sixth graders are either in a home base WIN, academic support, or in the intervention with the interventionist working on that.
Thank you for clarifying. Because I think, and I'm used to elementary
Yep.
Where, you know, the other kids come into the classroom.
Yeah.
At least at Pine Hill, so.
Yeah, yeah, it's definitely a designated teacher and space, and they rotate back to their home base WIN after the intervention is finished.
I appreciate that.
Yeah, no problem. Appreciate that you're asking.
I just, I know we're kind of short on time. Just as you think about it, just hearing some of the comments at the beginning of the session, like, and, and I know we're focused on safety in the classroom, like it's certainly worth like doubling down on that probably and understanding where we can do better there. And then, yeah, love to be interested in hearing what all the feedback was on how to improve the WIN blocks and stuff, because
Yeah.
I think when it's not with an interventionist, like the structured 15 minutes, those 15 minutes of that. I don't, I personally don't know that that's like the best use for all the students' time. I've heard lots of kids talking about it, so hopefully the student council gave you feedback on that as well.
Yeah, we surveyed students and they were good. You know, I think the IXL fatigue is real. So it's, how much do we need to really get to see where they're at, right? That's the question we're working with. And then the other piece is the homework, like 15 minutes of homework. Some kids, it takes them a while to initiate and then the 15 minutes, so
It's a lot of switching time. It's a lot of switching tasks in between.
Right, yeah.
I just know the homework load is high, so if there's
Yeah.
That 15 minutes not really accomplishing a lot.
Yeah, yeah. And they do, you know, I would say overall, the, the independent reading is something they love, so like how do we sort of mix that? So yeah, those are conversations happening and some tweaks happening. We have a WIN working group that's really looking at that and then we'll look at this as well, so yeah.
Thank you.
I, I really appreciate that you guys are doing something towards executive function, because I feel when the kids were in during COVID season, you know, the times, season, COVID times, they had to learn different skills for, you know, having their homework and all, all different study skills suddenly switched to, you know, they were, they were learning those skills in middle school and suddenly they had to switch on to different Google Classroom skills. And then when they're in high school now, some of the kids have lost those skills permanently or haven't learned those skills.
Yeah.
You know, note-taking and how to arrange and planning and all that. I think that'll be really beneficial.
Yeah, it's good. And we're learning a lot about it and it can be taught and practiced, right? And there's just so many pieces to it, right? It's the initiation, it's the note-taking, it's the, you know, so, yep, agreed.
Thank you.
Yeah, I'm looking forward to the conversation.
I second what Toa said. I have, my, my student has some, it's like a functioning one.
Yeah.
I think it was a lot.
I think that including the families in the conversation is so important
I know.
Because parents need to know what they can do to support
Yeah.
The skills that you're trying to enforce.
Yeah, yeah. I don't know what that's going to look like. I think we're really, you know, there's so many great people out there and sort of what does it look like at home and school, right? So, but yeah, excited to do that piece of it.
Thank you so much.
Great, you're welcome. Thank you, and I'll see you in the fall for the final, so thank you.
Thank you.
Well, similar to Ann, I welcome all the new members and thank you in advance for your time and your support of DS. Thank you, Ms. Johnson, for your time at graduation. I do want to give a shout out to 153 outstanding kids, kids that I care about very deeply. And they really had a fantastic year academically, socially, extracurricular wise. It was something that we were certainly very proud of. And before I give my school improvement plan, just a shout out to our girls tennis team who remains undefeated.
Yay!
They will be playing in the final four on Thursday against Bishop Fenwick at Concord Carly at 4 o'clock. Pretty amazing team. It's made up of three seniors, but the rest of the students are all underclassmen, so really, Ashley Tookleo has done a fantastic job. She was named Coach of the Year. She is an educational assistant in high school, which is great. So she has a great connection with the kids during the day and really great group of kids, so we're rooting for them. I have four goals that we have set up for next year. There's, there's some overlap and there's some that are a little bit different. And similar to Ann and with the district goals, these are four things that we'll focus on, but there'll be many more things that we'll cross. The first one is sort of a redesign and implementation of some new uses for our library space. As the superintendent mentioned, our librarian is retiring and we have the fortunate opportunity to do some physical construction in our library to reconvene how we want it to look. And we're looking at the potential to create a maker space in there. We're also looking at implementing a couple of our clubs that will be able to do some work out of the library. For those who don't know the high school library, it really is the hub. It's the center, it's where kids want to be, which is great, and it has lots of potential. And what we want to do is maximize that space. So that's going to be one of our focuses, is getting feedback from kids, which we started to do already. Our new librarian coming in had some fantastic and innovative ideas of what could be done in that space for our kids, while maintaining some of those real positive attributes that already exist. Kids can come to the library to do some academic work, they can work collaboratively, there's, there's quiet study areas, there's also group. And with the new physical design, there'll actually be an opportunity for our interdisciplinary course to have some classroom space in there from time to time. So that's one of our focuses. Our second one is to refine and enhance our co-teaching model. Throughout the district, we have co-teaching courses in place. And at the high school, the way that it looks, it's combining math, science, English, and social studies with special education. So you have two educators in there. One is a certified special educator, the other is a certified academic discipline teacher. And last year, we did some work with those teachers and training them on those models. We also did some throughout this year. We'll continue doing some this summer and the next year. And what we're doing is we're expanding it now to a second group. So we had World History I, we'll have World History II, we had English I, we'll also have English II. The advantage of this is it really does help support students and put students on a more even playing field, so that all students can access the curriculum at the levels that we need them to. And we've got some really talented special educators who are also dual-certified, which is fantastic. And we'll be looking at sort of the success of each of those co-teaching models. The third one is greater teacher collabor, collaboration across all of our districts, our disciplines rather. So the last couple of years, we've been taking a real deep dive into our nine best practices. We will continue to do so, but as the superintendent indicated, now is the time for us to sort of expand and share that knowledge with other departments. As you know, the high school is department-based, so we've got eight or nine departments. We now want to share those best instructional practices across all departments. For example, a science chemistry teacher sharing an instructional lab and sharing that opportunity with a math teacher in a creative way that they can use some of those district nine best practices. Same with English and social studies, same with technology and science. And what we plan on doing is having our early release days, some of those days geared towards working together on that. We have a full day in November and one of the plans for that is to have teachers teaching teachers using those nine best practices, in which they would be sharing some of their best instructional practices across the board. We actually did this about 10 years ago in a different format and it was very, very popular. And now that we have fine-tuned into these nine, we can really focus. A lot of times, high schools are silos, right? So you're, you're working in your respective department and you don't always have lots of time to see outside what's happening. This will, I guess, force it, but also it will help integrate it better so that we can get the experts across all of our disciplines working together. And the fourth one is a continuation of a goal that was set up this year, and that's student connectedness. So connectedness with each other. Toa had talked about during the COVID era, the isolation and how kids had to learn new skills. Well, they were also pretty isolated from each other. So they then also were desperate to get back together and to do things socially with each other. And this goal is really centered around creating school-based extracurricular opportunities for our kids to get together in a safe, structured manner. So instead of the inclination to want to have a house party or go someplace where you probably shouldn't be going, or where there's no supervision or it's unstructured, school can provide some of those opportunities. We did a whole bunch of things this year. We continued with a Battle of the Bands, which was very successful. We've had trivia nights, which are really cool. We have a fifth quarter program, which takes place after one of our football games in the fall where kids come in and there are a number of games and activities. There's always food, which always brings them in. And we have great support from our PTO. We have great support from SPANDS. And we also, at the same time we're developing this connectedness, want to be looking at alternatives to our students engaging in risky behaviors, sometimes with alcohol, sometimes with drugs, or other things. And the more that we keep them structured and thinking, this is a fun school event to come to, I get to socialize with my friends, which is ultimately what they want, but it's in a structured environment that's fun, the more things that we can do for that, I think the better will be. And in the meantime, we'll also examine our Mentor West Youth Risk Survey data to see if this plan has made an impact on our kids and getting feedback from them. In addition, something that's not on here, but we probably will morph into the second reading, under the same goal, the superintendent's advisory council, which the assistant superintendent, the superintendent ran all year, where they met with kids from both the middle and the high school. One of their recommendations was more opportunities for high school students to mentor middle school students. We think it's a fantastic idea, and so I'll be working with the, the middle school principal Ann over the summer, looking at ways that we can incorporate that. Within our schedules, they're a little different, but there's still some things we can do and there's still after-school opportunities. For those who are new to the region, we do actually have our eighth graders participate in music with our high school students, and there's already some great mentoring that happens there and some leadership. We are putting in for an eighth grade waiver for football, so we may have some eighth graders playing junior varsity freshman football. So other opportunities for some real mentorship and leadership. You know, we're a small district, but I think we're pretty powerful with the capabilities of our kids. And I always say to all the high school kids, we need each other. And I think if we can expand that to the point where we also include our middle school students, particularly the eighth graders, I think it can help with their transition to ninth grade, a feeling of connectedness, knowing some of the kids already up at the high school, and just a greater sense of, you know, where we're going. So be happy to answer any questions that you may have.
You want?
No, sounds like a great plan.
It does, it's ambitious too.
Yeah, yeah.
But you know, the kids that I saw graduating, I thought the graduation was fantastic. Thank you, Mr. Smith, for all you did for that too. That was wonderful.
Thank you, very proud of them. Very proud.
It was lovely. I actually got a little teary-eyed at the student speeches.
I know, weren't they great? They great? Yeah, lovely speeches and just really, just really nice kids. Wide range of talents, just, your daughter in the yearbook was amazing, you know, just the themes, just so many different things that we can just be so proud of, so, so, thank you.
Great. Thank you.
Thank you, Bill.
Okay, so now we're moving on to our action items, which is, the first one is what she just discussed with the transfer. Right. So hopefully I gave you enough background information in the memo. We, we do have a special purpose fund for unemployment, so that we don't build any unemployment potential expense into your operating budget. But as we've looked at our last 10 years of claims, we are at a point where we need to replenish it so that we don't have to draw from the general fund. The request is up to 75,000. Knowing that we could, we still don't know exactly what the year end is going to be, we will not take, we will not transfer more than then we put you below your 3% that we're trying to maintain. So we're doing up to 75,000. We'll make that determination before June 30th and make that transfer. And this was in consultation with Pat Collins, our treasurer, as well, and he agrees with this plan.
Right. Okay, so I'm going to ask for a motion to approve to transfer an amount not to exceed
$75,000 into the Unemployment Compensation Fund before June 30th, 2025. Do I have a motion?
I move.
And do I have any, a second?
Second.
Is there any discussion? All in favor? Thank you. Thank you very much. Okay, so next, we go to the High School Athletic Handbook, this is our second read. So for those of you who, you're new, we did all this a few months ago, it's been a bit, and Cam put this together, and as you know, he's the trainer, the athletic assistant, the trainer, and he, I think, did a phenomenal job. When I read this, I was, that was great. So this is our second read, and we have to vote on this as well, don't we? So did anyone have any questions? It's the same, he didn't have to change anything, and he was at a college before he came to us, so a lot of this is very well thought out and reasoned, and I'm very appreciative of all the, how he defined things, and especially with regards to concussions and other things about how they train. I thought it was great, and he did things in here, if you noticed, he included in there with bullying, too, in the handbook, and cyberbullying. It's extremely comprehensive, so I had no questions, I read through it again. Does anybody else have anything? With that being said, since it's the second read, may I have a motion to approve, right, the High School Athletic Handbook as presented in our packet?
Move to approve.
Jeff, second. Thank you. And is there any discussion? All in favor? Or, because Toa had to leave, so I'm going to say that, but it passes, because we have...
Yes, still two, yeah.
Yeah, we have that. So there we go, that was great. So finally, the last one is to appoint a Metco liaison to the school committee.
Want to talk a little bit about that?
Yeah, because, do we have anybody who's expressed interest?
So Shamika Dedman, who was one of our Boston parents, has served as a liaison this year to the regional school committee. This was actually the first year, thanks to a change in policy, and the addition of a policy, that we've had a member of our Boston family group serve on the committee, and I think that is a really important advancement that the committee made, and provides all of our students from Boston, Dover, and Sherburne with representation here. They unfortunately cannot be voting members per town bylaws, but certainly having a voice at the table, and having input, and being able to be a liaison is super important. That said, I do, I would like to recommend that the committee consider not appointing a liaison yet. I would love for our three chairs of the three school committees to come together this summer with those who have served in that capacity, and those who might be interested in serving in that capacity, to talk about, are there better ways to involve them? Because we appreciate their time and presence, both in person and on Zoom, but I think that there is so much more potential that could come with that position, so it's my recommendation to you to consider waiting until the fall.
I think that's, and I actually, Kate had sent an email asking, and I think that's a great plan, Kate Potter, who finished her term, she's very, she was very active with Metco, so I think that we should meet and see if we're doing this in the most effective way. So if that's okay with the rest of you, we'll table this until the fall.
Okay.
All right, so the rest of the things are consent items.
The first one's just the reappointment. So annually, we have to reappoint the treasurer, so again, because we're like a small municipality, we actually have a district treasurer, and Pat Collins, we're recommending to reappoint again, this will be his second.
So I need a motion for that, right?
You have a package.
Second, okay, so that's, and then the other thing is the approval of the May 6 minutes. I always find this weird, because they weren't here, so.
They can abstain.
They can abstain, but...
It doesn't really, I don't think it really matters.
Yeah, so these are the main...
Still, you can read them.
You can read them, and I saw no, well, you weren't here, but you were kind of here. You were here just by default, because you're on a committee, but I saw no errors, so that was, that was that. So just a motion to approve the minutes from May 6, 2025, for our regional school committee.
I move to approve the consent items.
Yeah.
All right, and second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor? Thank you. So the informal items are the subcommittee assignments, which I already talked about, so I'll be sending those out. The Class of 2025 Matriculation Report, which, really great places that they're all going, everybody's going somewhere neat, some people are going abroad, some people are taking a gap year, all sounds great to me. And the Dover School Committee Minutes are in there, if you want to read them, and the Sherburne School Committee Minutes, I usually just read those, just so I can see what's going on district-wide, it kind of helps me know, and maybe if there's something coming down the line, that we should know. It's always good to know, and then if I have a question, I can call on one of them. So with that being said, would anyone like to move to adjourn at 6:45 PM?
Move to adjourn?
Second, very second, all right, all in favor? We're done. Thank you.